While we're waiting for the clerk to get the, her computer up, we can go to the presentation by Jennifer Roy on program of studies. Jennifer?
Okay. By this time you would have already had the program of studies that was electronically sent to you. As you know, there was a letter that was attached to it. There weren't many modifications that were made to it. We tried to clean up some of the language, make it easy to understand and to follow. Couple of things that we did in majors, we took a look at the math-related courses. It's very important to comply with RIDE regulations to make sure that if we list it as a math course, that it actually contains a certain number of standards that are in it. So we went through, and again, we went through that list, make sure we cleaned that up, to say that the ones that we listed as math-related, that someone would take as a senior, were actually math-related and contain the number of standards that were in there. The other thing that you saw is you just saw a cleaner version of graduation requirements. You saw two new classes, portfolio preparation, that was to help with some of our art students, to prepare them if they were going to take AP. It gives them their first look at creating an actual portfolio. The other course was statistics, that was rewritten. It used to be an intro to stats course. They rewrote that, added a little bit more content in it, to again, make it a math-related. The AP courses stayed the same. There's 13 of them that are offered, and we established a new program where if a course did not run over three years, then we dropped it, and if a teacher wanted to the following year, they could revamp the course and offer it again in November. So those were the modifications that were made to it, or wasn't really any major changes from the year before.
Is that done?
For the committee's edification, just so you know, every year this comes to you, and we go out to print, if you will, following a presentation to you, and normally around this time, we do go out to print. So I would love to have you actually take a vote on this this evening.
When does this, when do the students pick the courses?
The students will start to pick the courses. The program of studies will be ready hopefully February 1st. Teacher recommendations occur the first two weeks of February, and then around that February 14th is when the students will actually start working with the guidance counselors.
Are there any questions? Yes, Mrs. Benson?
I don't have any questions, but I must congratulate you, Ms. Roy. You did a wonderful job, and I read each one of them, and I studied it very closely. And thanks to you and Dr. Veal, there's a roadmap. But I have two things that I made notes on. In recent weeks, I've read about students in music and students from North Kingston, and I put a bracket around the history of pop, pop music, one and two. And if kids are good in music, they seem to be able to get employment just as quick and be able to contribute to society, and I was wondering why it was a half a credit for those two courses. It's almost like if you were given credit for playing in sports. That's the linchpin that holds certain kids in school. And that was one of the questions. And my other one was that I didn't see a complete direction for a kid with IEPs and educational disadvantage, as our past governor referred to it. And why I went to that one was, some four years ago, a situation arose about the graduation of this child, and she was completely handicapped, and then the day before graduation, she couldn't graduate, but she'd gone all through ninth through 12th grade here to high school. So maybe that's something that you can get back to us, and we can get it ironed out before it has to go to print, Dr. Thompson.
Well, actually, I can, I can answer your question. The, the history of pop is offered in half credits, and, and I'm gonna, you know, give you my opinion on it, just so that it's offered to more students that have a chance to take it. It also allows us to have both courses that are in there, gets more students involved. The IEP question that you have, the services, one of the additional things that I did was it lists services that are in there. The IEP service doesn't go into great detail in the program of studies, because that's something if a parent believes that their child is, is suffering some, some sort of disability, they'll contact the director of people, people services, and they'll go through a chain of command that's, that's there. So it doesn't really go into as much detail as the other courses do, but at least the parent knows, and it also gives the parent an opportunity, it gives them a phone number which they can contact. From that point, that process kind of takes in itself, so it really doesn't go into as much detail in the program of studies, because that's a personal, private, individualized program for that student.
Okay, I noticed that, but I wanted to hear you say you had some of the services that were offered, you know, like you listed speech and some of the other.
Oh, we do, yes.
You had those listed there, but it was just a question I wanted to ask, because a kid with a 204 and an IEP cannot be expected to come up to the level of a general student and receive gradu-, and graduate, but yet he might be here for four years and do, does all he can, and I just didn't see anything in there that would accommodate that job.
Yes, Mr. Thompson, go ahead. Ms. Roy, I'm just curious as to which classes were dropped, and were they all dropped because of the lack of interest, or was there any other reasons?
There was about, there were several classes that were dropped. They were dropped over the course of three years that they did not participate. Some of the courses, there was a theater and producing a play course that had not run in three years. There was a nature journaling course that had not run in three years. So the department had, were informed of that, and they brought it back to their departments. And again, the option was every November we come back, and if there's a new course that they wanted to, it pretty much was dropped for a lack of interest, because we hadn't run it in three years.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mudge?
Ms. Roy, first I'd like to say, I have two grandchildren in college today, and each of them, as a result of taking the AP courses here at North Kingston, basically got a half semester, I guess a full semester, right? It's, I mean, September.
It's a full year course, yep, full year course.
They got like 21 credits as a result of taking the AP courses.
Wow.
And one was 19, I think one was 20. So obviously, the courses you're running in that area have been excellent for the kids that are going on, and, you know, the kids that need that. So I commend the, the school for the program, and hope all the money's there so we can continue to fund those courses. Which brings me to another question. You never, is this gonna change our impact on our budget?
The courses that are running this year?
Well, changes in our, our new, you know, curriculum.
I can field that if you want. Every year, a high school budget is driven by what students select. It's the number of sections we run. And in my budget talk that you'll hopefully see this evening, if not next week, you'll see a slide tonight, you didn't see last night, about my proposed additions, in that there are a couple of fractions at the high school I would propose to you. I'll give you one right now, one right now, really quick. At the high school, historically, we had, or have, an internship where kids go out in the community and do internships. We found, in looking at it closely, it wasn't doing what it needed to do, and I'll talk more about it later, I would need a .2 of a person to do it correctly. So you'll see my proposed adds, but I'll tell you, you never really know at the high school what the eventual FTE count would be. It could be a .6 less of ELA, a .6 more of math, but in the end, we work within like a certain confines with Ms. Roy, on Dr. Camereworthy, and we try to get it done, but I have not budgeted for any quantum increases in FTEs.
I guess I understand that, but do a good job, you've done a very good job, and you've got my support.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. Did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question.
Okay.
I, I just had a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased with the level of courses that we add, or we have here, that I think we have very good offerings, a number of the courses I thought would be very interesting to take, and so I thank you and the rest of the administration for the number of courses we do offer, and for, for the variety.
Okay. All right, moving on.
I have one more.
Okay, no, we need, we need to get Phil out, so.
I know it, I know it.
Okay.
The one thing I wanted to leave is, I would hope that we could get our intern program back going, between links and the volunteers and people. I think an intern is very important. I know kids that, that intern at Alice Donuts, one of the local businesses here in town for kids, and is now purchasing a donut shop, and kids that do intern at Brooks, a Rite Aid. So that's very important to me, because see, everyone's not going to college, but if these kids can get into an intern program, and you see, every day you see something on television within the educational community about the need for health care. And even if they only got into an intern program down at the senior center, when the doctors are there taking the blood pressure, that's putting the school and the community and giving these kids a chance that don't see that hope that a kid's in a course like Mr. Mudge was talking about. So that's what I wanted to say, and I hope you can work on that.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roy.
And, and you understand what I mean, Mr. O'Gee?
Yes, I do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now, if the clerk would please read the role.
Lynda Avanzato, here. Melvoid Benson.
Here.
Larry Cerisi. William Mudge.
Present.
Kimberly Page, here. Joe Thompson.
Here.
Richard Welch.
Here.
Julia Halt, here.
And the student tonight.
Michael Avanzato.
Here.
I would just like to inform the audience that Larry Cerisi is not here tonight, as he had an operation today, and will probably be out for at least three weeks. And I, I can report, I guess at this time, that his operation was successful. Okay, the calendars, please.
January 10th, we have a policy, or that was passed. The next event we have is January 17th, there's no school from Rotten Lord of the King Day. We have a school committee budget meeting at 8:30 PM on January 18th, and then a school committee business meeting at 7:00 PM on January 25th.
And for those of you who are not aware, there is no school tomorrow. Okay. We're gonna jump around on the agenda, as the superintendent has to leave here by 8:00, and we want to go to the Jamestown budget. Tuition.
Thank you. Over the past several months, my administrative team has been looking at the question of the tuition that we need to set for next year's Jamestown students. In those conversations first, I would let, just let you know, I believe, and I think many of you would agree, that Jamestown truly is value-added for, for our, our school district, so I'm really, you know, happy to have them with us. In terms of getting to the actual number, one thing we had to look at is, we had to transition from what's called insight to Uniform Tribal Council, UCOA. You've all heard of that, it's a new way to categorize all of our money, and it's very confusing, even for us, you work with it every day. Having said that, we tried to look at a UCOA number that included all the different variables. In our conversations, we did find a few pieces that we felt historically weren't in the number, that we should put in the number. For example, Dr. O'Gee's time, a piece of Dr. O'Gee who works at the high school, that's part of the conversation in terms of tuition number. So having said that, all in, you know, we also looked at, one last piece, we looked at grants, federal grants, and put that in the high school allocation. So to summarize it all up in your packet, as you can see, the proposed tuition number for a general education student would be 98.27, that's approximately 116 more dollars than the previous year. Special education would go up more dramatically due to the federal grant conversation, that goes up approximately $5,000 per student to 37, 38. A caveat on that one, as you may know, these are always numbers in the rears, these numbers for special ed will go down. A big piece of this was the our money we were receiving, so as that goes away, you see the number drop in the years to follow. And lastly, ESL, up to 52,545, approximately $890 more. So that's my proposal to the committee for tuition for the following school year for Jamestown. With that, I can take any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table this item until we can have further discussion. I find that, that as a new committee member, I am certainly unaware of the actions and things that have transpired. In fact, and I don't know why we have to make that decision tonight, there is nothing binding, where there is not an agreement that's in place that, you know, suggests we need to do that. I would also like to submit to the chairman, the fact that, that apparently former school committee chairman Cerisi, on October 26th of this year, signed a memorandum of agreement with Jamestown regarding students attending North Kingston. Please submit that to the record for me. Okay, please. And with respect to that, I have many, many questions. In fact, if you look at that rate, I asked what this rate is based on. Apparently, it's based on a contract that hasn't been approved. I look at that, $9,827, it has no bond cost in it. As we know, we still have a 25-year bond debt with North Kingston High School, okay, and Jamestown was obligated to pay 30%. Yeah, I don't see any figures in there. I would also say, quite frankly, if you look at this closely, you will see since a rate was established for 2011, which was last year, and I believe that was $9,012, that the general education rate, okay, has gone up a mere $32, $31.
Bill, I'd like to have the, the attorney address your concern.
I haven't finished yet.
Excuse me, Bill.
I haven't finished my comment.
Excuse me, well, I'm gonna talk to you about it. And the next time, would you please wait to be identified by the chair rather than speaking out? Thank you. Ms. Carroll, would you please address Mr.?
Yes. First of all, the actual contract with Jamestown, the original contract expires on June 30th, 2012. However.
That's not correct. 2011.
By, by November 1st of each year, since we are now in the, we were in the last three years of the contract, in November 1st, either we can notify Jamestown that we no longer want their students, or they can notify us that they're no longer going to send their students. So we had a November 1st deadline to share that information from Jamestown to North Kingston.
That's incorrect.
Because we did not have a set, we hadn't agreed on a set payment of tuition, we worked with Jamestown, and we got a continuance of that November 1st deadline to January 1st. It was an agreement between the two school committees. It was a, a motion approved by this school committee to continue to January 1st, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was an agreement with the Jamestown school committee to continue till January 1st. When we realized that we still did not have a working number between the two committees, we then further extended that contract decision to January 15th. So there were two memorandums of agreement, the first one extending to January 1st, the second one extending to after tonight's meeting. We wanted to make sure we had the last opportunity tonight. We need to tell Jamestown tonight what we are going to charge for tuition for Jamestown students, so that then they, at their meeting, will have the opportunity to make a decision as to whether they're going to notify us, whether they're gonna continue to send students to Jamestown. What would happen, if they don't like, or they can't accept the number that we come up with, they will notify us that starting next year, they are not going to be sending their freshmen to North Kingston. And then it would be, we'd lose the sophomores. So we need to make a decision tonight, or Jamestown may make the decision at its next meeting, which is Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday night, that they will no longer send students here, they will send the students somewhere else. So you must decide tonight on a tuition rate, that's all you're deciding tonight, is the tuition rate, so that Jamestown on Thursday can then decide whether they want to notify us, whether they're not, they're gonna continue to send students to North Kingston.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Now, Mr. Mudge.
Completely erroneous, I am so disappointed.
Mr. Mudge?
Yes.
If you would please make a motion so that we can vote it up or down.
I will not, I'd like to speak about this first. Okay?
Then you've got that motion, so let's take a vote on your motion to table.
Okay.
It has no second. Is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Okay, now we can go into discussion.
Thank you. May I speak? I have a piece of paper in front of me, Mr. Chairman.
Are you gonna wait to be acknowledged, or are we gonna go through this every time?
You're getting close.
No, you're getting close, Bill. Would you just please go along with the rules? Thank you. Mrs. Avanzato, you had something to say?
Just a quick point. A lot of aspects of the Jamestown contract were troubling to the committee and have been looked into and revised, and we still have a ways to go with this, and that's the reason why we went to a one-year situation, so that we could have flexibility on both sides to look at the agreement. Obviously, North Kingston is very fortunate to have the Jamestown students here, and we want to keep them here, and that goes without saying. I think that according to the attorney's advice, we need to do this on the tuition rate right now. I'm, I'll be anxious to hear what the superintendent says after this motion, depending upon whether it passes or fails regarding what his recommendation is, but I see that there's an increase, and I think that that's a good thing, and I think we have another year where we can look at the amount again, so.
And the contract language.
And the contract language as well, yeah, because there are other issues to be addressed in the future on that.
Mr. Page?
Excuse me, I think I was in line before.
Mr. Mudge was first.
Go ahead, Mr. Mudge.
I just thought we were gonna follow protocol, that's all.
Well, I, while I understand your arguments that you're going to make, Bill, I would say that we ought to vote on this tonight, because we have had a number of times where we've been talking about this contract for about a year, and we have had continual negotiations in November, when we didn't think we were quite ready with the, we talked about this in May, we then talked about it in August, in November, when it was decided we didn't quite have an agreed-on rate, we said that we would then push it off. Both sides have been very gracious about putting this off, but I think we've come to the time where we can't do that anymore, because it is budget time for both of us. So we need to make a decision, and I'll be saying that, no, I don't want to table this tonight, that I do want to make sure that we vote on this tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, but I think, in fact, with two lawyers, yeah, I'd like them to look at this, because I have a contract in front of me, that says Jamestown has the option by January 1st of this year of making a decision. Now, is this contract binding or not? There is no reason to make a decision tonight. Look at that, this is what was signed by the school committee chairman on October 26th, and I was trying to get information to make a decision, to find out what the best things are. I couldn't get this information, I stumbled across it, and then I finally asked the school department this today. Please give me an, an opinion on what this contract says. I think it says clearly, okay, if Jamestown opts to dis, to discontinue sending children that are about to enter into North Kingston, no late in January, one of the prior year discontinuance. This isn't a fact. Did Jamestown send us a note saying they didn't want to continue next year?
We continued that to January 15th. I know, you're talking about a memorandum of agreement.
No, I'm talking about.
That was designed on October 26th, 2010.
I'm talking about amendment three to the contract. Amendment three.
Is that what you just handed down?
Yes, amendment three. And by the way, this is the document, and I have also, I'd like to say, which is appalling to me, okay, I had received an email today someplace, and in fact, who was the school committee, subcommittee that was working with Jamestown? I was informed, there was none. Could somebody tell me who the chairman of the subcommittee was for this school department, assigned by this school committee to negotiate a contract?
Mr. Mudge, what are you talking about as amendment three?
I just handed it to you.
Addendum.
The amendment to the agreement dated June 30th, 2001, is that what you're talking about?
It's third up there.
Yes, it says third up there.
Yep.
That does, this, we, in the original contract, with all of its addendums and additions and, and exhibits, on November 1st, we either needed to tell Jamestown that we didn't want the Jamestown students, or Jamestown needed to tell us that they didn't want, I mean, that they didn't want to send their students to us. We were negotiating, we were trying to come up with.
Who's we were negotiating?
Jamestown and North Kingston.
Who for North Kingston?
I sat in a meeting with Dr. Thornton, several members of the committee at different times came to meeting.
Were you authorized to represent North Kingston School Committee to negotiate with Jamestown?
Yes.
I have not found that anywhere, that we had a negotiating committee that was approved by the North Kingston School Committee.
May I continue?
And I've asked for minutes of meetings, and there are none.
We didn't come to any agreement, and that's why.
It's not the issue.
Jamestown and North Kingston School Committees, at a vote of both school committees, voted to continue the November 1st date to January 1st. We needed more time, so we had a, there's another addendum that was signed by and adopted by both committees, extending to January 15th. You must decide tonight what the tuition rate is going to be, so that Jamestown, at its school committee meeting on Thursday night, can decide whether they want to continue sending their students to North Kingston. If you don't vote tonight, then they will have no information for which they can vote, and do you want to take a chance that based on the fact that we can't give them a number, they pull their students?
You know, the, the whole process has been just incredible. Now, you're telling me, besides this one that was signed on October 26th, just before election, that we would, I'll extend this to January 1st, is there another one besides this?
Yes, yes.
Well, when, when is the school committee gonna see these things? And when was it voted, when was the other extension voted on?
This was discussed multiple times at open meetings.
I asked for this to be.
One more at a time, please.
I asked for the information from the superintendent for all documentation, so I could see that, okay? And I just got this one, I didn't receive the latest one. And furthermore, how can you change a contract and put a rate in that the rate doesn't agree with the formula of the contract?
Excuse me, we're not changing the contract, though. We're talking about the tuition.
You are changing the contract, sir.
Okay. We need to move the question.
Okay, excuse me, I haven't finished yet. For example, all we have to do is look at the new rate. The new rate vies the old rate. The old rate said we would have, and in fact, in fiscal year 10 and 11, you had a facility bond rate of, per the contract, of $629.10 and $610.11. And accordingly, there is no facility bond rate in this contract, which is a violation of the contract. And furthermore, if you look at this, and my research tells me, we haven't even approved, to the best of my knowledge, the fiscal year 10 rate with Jamestown, nor have we approved a fiscal year 11 rate. And I'd like to show, have somebody show me where we approve that fiscal year 10 and fiscal year 11 rate.
Okay, Bill, that's not gonna happen right now, we have a motion made by you and seconded.
This is germane.
But wait a minute, Bill. If your motion passes, then everything stops and we go forward. If it doesn't pass, then we'll go on from there.
Well, let's continue the discussion on the lack of information, why I'm bringing this up, okay? Is the fact that we don't have sufficient information in here, okay? It's obvious, we don't, we, we, we have no, and just look at it, don't believe me, we have a contract that says we'll have to, we'll have a, a, a cost for the bond issue, that's not in here. Could somebody tell me what the bond cost is in this rate? Is the bond cost part of the contract formula? Answer is yes. So we can't change this unless we change the contract.
Okay, Kim?
Bill, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you, and at this time, I'm gonna ask for, that we call the question.
Thank you. We need a vote on the call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 This motion's to table.
Yes, but you have to call the question first, right?
Okay.
You have to take a vote on call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, so now we'll take a vote on the motion to table. Okay, so now we'll take a vote on the motion to table the tuition contract.
To table it.
To table it. Isn't that what you asked for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, you know what, we'll have a roll call on this. Please call the roll. When the discussion is over, we're taking, taking a vote on the motion.
I have one important question, though.
No, we're, Mrs. Benson, we're beyond that point now.
You didn't give us a chance. Mr. Mudge was doing the talking.
We called the question, everybody voted to call the question. It's now time to vote. Please call the roll.
Linda Avinzado.
No.
Melvoid Benson.
Astain.
William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
No.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
No.
Julia Held.
She didn't vote. What is it, please? What was the count? Here's the one that...
Motion passes five to one.
No, no, no. The motion fails.
Motion fails five to one.
Motion fails five to one. Okay. Mrs. Avizzano?
I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. I think we all are aware that the Jamestown contract was a mess, and this committee said that repeatedly, and, and yes, there were addendums all over the place, and that's the reason why this committee, because we had two or three sessions of trying to iron it all out, said, "We're going to agree on the rate for now," and this, and we agreed, we agreed as a committee that we were going to just set the rate and discuss the rest of the problems in all the language and the rest of the contract in the future, because we just didn't have the time to do that, and that's where we are now. This addendum that you're referring to, we are now past that date, so, so we need to vote on the tuition rate. That's the way I see it. And again, this is an open matter that will now have the flexibility to revisit the rate and increase if we need to, and then also to address the language and the problems. There were several committees for negotiations of Jamestown tuition and contract, and Mrs. Brunel, and I think Mrs. Page, was also on the committee at one time, and it changed up a few times. I don't really know.
If you allow me to jump in.
Absolutely.
It wasn't necessarily a committee as much as it was a group of people, and so that's why there are no committee reports. And so, at times, it was a sort of thing of, I think, I went once to a meeting, I don't know how many times the other people went. I was not able to go over to Jamestown, but it was when they came to our place that I met at the superintendent's office, so it was more of a discussion.
There was, I would also point out that during the teachers' contract negotiation meetings, I don't think there are minutes of the teachers' contract negotiations, correct me if I'm wrong, there are no minutes of the negotiation meetings, just as there are no minutes of the negotiation meetings of the Jamestown contract.
Well, Mr....
I understand.
May I respond?
No.
May I respond?
You asked for the superintendent's recommendation.
Mrs. Benson?
I would just like to make it clear to the committee and to the members from Jamestown, the question I wanted to ask, and you said we had to do it tonight. I see the chairman here from Jamestown, I have been sitting next to the representative, and we have gone through this, and if you read the Jamestown press, we're a little bit behind, because when they gave a year's report on the progress of their schools, this was one of the things that they highlighted as accomplishment. Now, this has been going long enough. I've talked with you, Billy, about it, you brought out your figures, you want to go back five years, but it comes a time when you have to do something for expediency, and if they have to have it for Thursday, I really regret abstaining, and I'm going to change my vote to not to support your vote, but I needed to say something before that, that you did not give me a chance to do, Mr. Chair. So if it's permissible with the chair, I would like to change an extension to a no on the last vote. Is that permitted?
Please record Mrs. Benson's vote as a no. Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Yes, Mr. Mudge?
This rate that you've put in here, before we vote on this, okay? What's happened to the bond rate cost? Number one. Number two, and this is why I wanted to have further discussions, for example, do we realize in this rate here that Jamestown's paying a rate this year, or yes, this is for fiscal year 12, Mr. Chairman, they're paying a fiscal year 12 rate based on fiscal year 9 information? So all our raises for our teachers aren't in there, benefits aren't in there, none of that cost is in there. All you have to do is look at the documentation. This rate table is based on fiscal year 2009 data, which is also a violation of the contracts, because we should be using, even on the Greek, fiscal year 10 data. So just clearly look at that. Another violation of the contract. And we're actually saying to the North Kingston residents, we'll charge Jamestown with the price of what teachers and costs were in 2009, but in 2012, you know, you can pay, you know, the difference, the inflation and the cost and everything else.
Bill, can I comment on this?
Yes.
To your surprise, I'm going to agree with you.
Yeah, I agree also.
Okay? However...
I'm surprised it's right.
However, we have to live with the terms of the contract that's in effect. Now, if you don't like the terms of the contract in effect, that's okay, all right? We have to live with that contract until its expiration or it's negotiated for a change. Now, we can't change it in the middle unless both sides agree.
Well, then how come, Mr. Chairman, we don't have a bond cost rate in there, which is in the contract?
You know, Bill, we had this discussion last night...
Yeah?
At the town council meeting, and you didn't like the answer you got last night. You haven't liked the answer that you've gotten for the last eight years on this.
Excuse me.
That's not going to change, Bill.
Excuse me.
What, excuse me, just a second. What we really need to do, Bill, is between now and November 1st, is to negotiate a contract that is fair to both sides and, and change what can be changed legally as well as by agreement. Now, all we need to talk about tonight is the tuition, not the faults in the contract.
Well, again, I'm telling you, I'm suggesting to you specifically, this violates the contract provision. These numbers do not reflect fiscal year 10 costs, and that's a disingenuous act for the taxpayers of North Kingston.
We'd like to have superintendent to address your question.
Number two.
Let's go one question at a time, Bill, please.
We talked a few minutes back about how we set the rate and how historically it's been through insight data, which is two years in the rears. With UCOA in our talks this fall, we had said, once UCOA comes online fully, which to date, it is not online fully in Rhode Island, would be one year in the rears. It's not possible to be in the actual fiscal year, as you know. Historically, it always has been two years in the rears via insight. That's how it's always been.
Well, I understand that, but we still have the fiscal year 10 data. Why aren't we using the fiscal year cost data, like the cost of the teacher, a high cost, whatever it is, okay, in the rates? We're not doing that. So they're getting a discount on the rates that are three years old. Number two, okay? We are not charging them any longer with this rate you're proposing, a penny for the bond in a high school. It's right here. We used to charge $610, which I disagree with, per year, at least in '011, okay? And it's zero, zeros. And let me finally say is, I totally disagree with our legal staff. I don't see a piece of paper in front of me today, except this agreement here, it was signed by the chairman of the school committee. Okay, is there another one that extends this and was made public?
I have a copy here.
Okay? Okay. And was it voted on in public?
Yes, it was voted on at the meeting.
At which meeting?
December 16.
It wasn't at the meeting that I was on, and I was on the school committee. How dare you? You signed something December 16th for a school committee that you had no right to sign?
I didn't sign anything.
Well, who signed it?
You signed something December 16th for school committee.
And you were on the committee, and it was...
Yeah? I got one signed the 26th of October with Larry Cerisi.
We have minutes of the meeting. This was going to have a school committee meeting.
That's absolutely incorrect. Absolutely incorrect. Well, who's this? Richard Welsh? Oh, Richard Welsh signed this agreement, and you didn't bring this to the school committee's attention, sir? How dare you? How dare you?
I didn't, I didn't sign anything that wasn't approved by the school committee.
You are absolutely incorrect. That's despicable, right here in front of us. You have signed a document, okay?
It was in the consent, it was part of the school committee meeting.
It was approved at a school committee meeting. We don't have the minutes because...
I have.
It was approved at a school committee meeting.
We were told by council, okay?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Can we please not have accusations and comments about someone being despicable when we don't have the information in front of us? I'd like to see whether Mr. Mudge was present at that meeting, whether that occurred at a meeting. At this point in time, we are looking at the tuition rate, and do we have the superintendent's recommendation on the table?
You know, Mrs. Avizzano, I do an hypothesis, but here's the thing that really bothers me is, is that we had already had an extension to the 1st of the year, and that extension said Jamestown had until January 1st of this year. They could have, they could have made their option then. So what you're saying is, before they'll make their option, they want to know what the rate's going to be for next year, and that's not what the contract's all about. There is no, there is nothing that says the date that we should approve the rate. And by the way, I defy anybody to tell me whether the school committee approved the fiscal year 10 rate with Jamestown and the fiscal year 11 rate. I have seen no documentation, and I've asked for that. So what's so important about this rate when the school committee didn't approve the 10 and 11 rate?
Okay.
So we have enough information, and I, and if Jamestown, I was going to ask that it be put off for a couple of weeks until we could square this away, okay? And I think that Jamestown could work with this. We love the kids from Jamestown, there's nothing to do with them, obviously, and we welcome them here.
Okay, Bill, if...
But we don't have all the data.
Bill, okay, now, you were at this meeting, and on page six of the meeting minutes on December 14th, regarding the Jamestown contract, a motion was made by Larry Cerisi to authorize Richard Welsh to sign the extension of a memorandum of agreement seconded by Melvoid Benson, and it passed 6-0, Bill. No abstentions, it passed 6-0. Okay, can I have a motion on the, on the superintendent's recommendation, please?
May I also add to that?
No, you're all done, Bill.
Okay, no, timeout, timeout.
You're all done, Bill. You've said enough things tonight.
There was never a reference to this October 26th addendum.
Bill, you've accused me of something that, you know, you didn't know what you were talking about, like some of the other things you've said tonight. Now, you're all done.
Sir, it was the October 26th.
Bill, you're out of order.
We never saw that, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Avizzano?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Can I have a second, please?
On the tuition rate? A second, Ed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on accepting the recommendation by the superintendent for the Jamestown tuition. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melvoid Benson?
Yes. May I address?
William Mudge?
No.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welsh?
Yes.
Linda Avinzado?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Motion passes. Five to one.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Superintendent, would you please move to the budget?
That just cost North Kingston $300,000.
At this point, I will have to defer my presentation until the 18th, as I have eight minutes.
Okay, all right. Then, because I know you need to catch a train to get out of town before the snow, thank you very much for your attendance tonight. I know your, your thoughts are elsewhere. Please go with our good wishes.
Thank you.
And our prayers, Mr....
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Benson?
I would like to make a motion, due to the conditions of the weather, and we all should be getting home, that we overlook the, we skip the consent agenda and go from unfinished business to new business. I see we have some citizens out here tonight, and I think they deserve to know where we are going with this.
Okay, do you have a particular item in new business?
F. Item F.
Okay.
Out to bid.
Okay, is there any objection to moving to item F in new business?
Yes.
I object.
One objection.
Roll call.
We don't need a roll call. There's only one objection. Then let's go to the discussion of the out, out placing bids for the food services, mini buses, janitorial services, and outside grounds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, this is a year for the contract, with some of the people in this, and in order to do our job, we have to give a firm yes and no to all of these items. We've had a lot of discussion, and some of us who've been on the school committee before, it is very well known that we are not for outsourcing. And I have several reasons why, I won't go into them tonight, but I want to say to you people out there, this is not a self-fulfilling prophecy of the things that you were told if certain things didn't happen on this committee. This is not a self-fulfilling prophecy that went on doing the last time, and I think some of you know what I'm talking about. This is something that should be taken care of, and I make a motion that to outsource and have all of these new bids put back away and give our attorney the permission to go on with the contracts that are due, so she could, so that the bargaining units can go into contracts.
Is there a second for Mrs. Benson's motion?
Is that the correct motion, Ed?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you are right. Yes, it's discussion only. So there is no motion tonight, Mrs. Benson. The, the vote and discussion will continue to the next meeting.
I make a motion that the vote continue to the next meeting and that it will be put on the agenda.
Thank you.
That the reason it's put on the agenda to give us some time to get some more information as to why some of these were put there, not why, but a more information into the point that, have you done a town's time study on food service? Have you done a time study on mini buses? And please, don't make it all with Blue Cross. We sitting here have to have Blue Cross. I don't have to have it. Thank God that, that man-a-man wasn't, didn't have sense enough to get out of that Navy. But those of you sit there, so these decisions will not be made on that, and that we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Is there any other comments on the item, discussion for out-service bids?
What is a whispering about? Say it so I can hear.
What I said was, is this is a work session, so if there's anyone who wanted to comment on it, we have to allow time for public comment, because it's a work session.
But I wanted to make sure that we covered the school committee first.
Did you understand my motion? Would the secretary read my motion back? I think somewhere it's...
Mrs. Benson, we're under discussion, so under new business, there's, it's discussion tonight, and the, we put, if you remember, this was under new business, items are put down for you to discuss and then moved to old business to actually vote on, so the committee will see them twice. So your motion to say no would actually happen in two weeks. Tonight, it would just be a discussion. Tonight, it would just be a discussion. There's no voting on this item tonight.
Thank you.
It's under new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, you'll have your hand up.
I'm not sure I understand the out to bid. Are these...
That's the question. Why was that on there?
Excuse me, Mrs. Benson. Would you let Mr. Mudge talk?
Yes, I will.
Are these issues that you're considering to put out the bid, or are they already prepared and going out the bid?
The discussion was to have, to talk whether or not the committee felt that any one or all of these items be put out on an RFP to get bids to see whether or not...
Thank you.
They should be.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Benson?
If the discussion is to see whether these items would be put out on an RFP, I make a motion that... We can't make a motion, but I... What can we do?
Talk about it. Discussion.
You seem to be changing stoplights every time you go a post road.
Mrs. Benson, we...
That's where I need your help. You're the school committee's attorney.
Right.
You have the knowledge, and you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, I understand. If you remember, we talked about the fact that we had to put these on the agenda so that we could get the feelings of the committee as to how they wanted to move with ESP negotiations. And basically, if any of these four are going to be considered, if we're ever going to consider to privatize them, before we get to negotiations, we need to do an RFP. So what we talked about was the fact that we had to put them on the agenda so that the committee could have a discussion as to whether they wanted them to go to RFP or not, and then they could give the superintendent, myself, and whoever else is going to be on the negotiating committee, a clear understanding as to where you want to go with ESP. As we said, if you have no intention of ever going to, if you have no intention of privatizing these, then we need a vote of the committee, and that will take place at the next meeting. Tonight, you're just going to talk about it, to tell us, don't waste your time, don't waste your money, and don't waste your effort because it's not going to happen. So tonight is the discussion as to whether or not, when this comes up for a vote next meeting, you want these privatized or not. Tonight is the discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Carol Kim.
Well, I consider our employees in all these areas very valuable, so I'm a little leery of taking any of these out to vote. I know that the superintendent was going to make a recommendation on this, and I was wondering if Mr. Ogier was prepared to do that, or if he's not, and that's fine. But that would be, you know, where I would start the conversation is, I certainly don't want to do all four. I would want to hear some of the rationale behind each one of them. I think I've said very publicly to Trish Colley that I would not outsource our food services. So I would want to hear his rationale behind the other three. And I'm leaning towards, no, I wouldn't do that, but I would like to know the rationale.
Is it Mr. Thompson?
When we do get the instructions from the superintendent, I also am leaning in the direction of doing one, because I think that's what taxpayers have asked us to do. But I don't want to do a complete bloodletting on this thing. So I'm looking forward to getting next week when we talk. I would like to hear the superintendent talk about which one and why that he would choose, or put them in some kind of priority order, because I'm leaning toward voting for one.
Mrs. Avanzano?
I would just concur with some of the comments made by Kim, and I think this is an area, obviously, we need to be very careful and very slow and cautious in our movement in this, because we do value all of our employees in all of these areas. Isn't something we particularly want to look at, any of them. But I think everybody's aware of the kind of pressures that the school, this school district and many others are under. And at our budget meeting last night, the town council outlined some of those. And every year, it just seems like the crunch gets worse and worse. I feel like we have to do our due diligence and gain information. I don't think that necessarily leads to a blanket decision here, and I do think we need to hear from the superintendent about it. But I don't think we can afford to ignore either, because we've got so many pressures on the school system, and we've got to preserve our educational programs as well. So I think there's a balancing that's necessary here, and we need to hear from Dr. Thornton next meeting.
Mrs. Benson?
You're absolutely right, Mrs. Avanzano. And in balancing, I would like to state that on the next agenda and working on the budget, if this the right time, or should I come in the office, or should I contact you to see if I can get permission to put it on? We have more than the lowest-salaried people.
You're going to offer this to the floor.
The lowest-salaried people in our administration and working in the school department that needs to be looked at. And if Mrs. Carol will repeat again what she was seeking tonight, that is what I was seeking. Repeat it again. That's our attorney. Okay.
Mr. Welch? Yes?
If when we negotiate with ESP, we are going to consider privatizing any of these four groups, prior to starting that negotiation, we need to have gone out to an RFP so we have something to compare it to. In other words, how do we negotiate that we're going to, for example, privatize food services if we don't have an RFP that shows how we could do it cheaper than with our own people? So what I'm looking for from the committee, actually, the superintendent is looking for from the committee, is direction from the committee. Do you want to consider privatizing any of these four? If you do, then we need to go out for an RFP right now to have the numbers to consider. If you don't want to consider privatizing any of these, then we certainly don't want to waste anybody's money and time and effort to develop an RFP and then to put it out to bid. So we need direction from the committee. Are we thinking of privatizing? If yes, then we go to an RFP. If not, then it comes off the table, and we don't discuss it, and it's not up for negotiations when we negotiate the ESP contract.
Okay, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wants to speak, public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
I haven't said a thing.
Oh.
Been waiting patiently to address this issue.
Okay, Mr. Mudge.
First of all, I know, not being on the committee, not knowing what's happened, has the committee appointed a subcommittee to negotiate? Or who's "we"? Who's negotiating the committee? Who's negotiating this contract?
Maybe if you had attended the executive session, I know you were unable to, you, we could talk about that.
Okay. All I'm asking for, do we, are we going to have a school committee, subcommittee, you know, participate in the negotiations? That should be public information.
Negotiations of what, Bill?
Of the ESP contract.
Yes. There will be a committee.
Okay, that's why I'm sure we can announce that, but I just...
But of course, that's got nothing to do with this item.
Well, it kind of did, because if we, it's kind of, we're asking things to happen before the subcommittee's even informed to make a recommendation on what they want to do with these, and that's what the subcommittee would be doing.
The school committee discussed it tonight in executive session.
Well, I know, it's a, you discuss it in executive session, but now you've got it on the agenda to look at X, Y, Z, Q. So it looks like things are moving on quickly without the subcommittee ever being informed. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this subject only? The four items, food service, mini buses, janitorial, or outside grounds?
Sandra Blankenship, 103 Dodge Street, president of NK ESP. I feel like I'm in deja vu here, to be honest with you, and thank you, Ms. Benson, for speaking up for us. Very much appreciated. I have to say one thing. A statement was made that you have to do RFPs before negotiating with us if you so choose to have the conversation about privatizing, to find out if you can deliver it cheaper. All right? I have one thing to say tonight. Obviously, I will prepare something more if you decide to go forward and bring more community with me at that time. Cheaper doesn't, you know, you don't always get what you pay for when you go cheaper. We deliver excellent service to this community, this school community. We have a number of veteran people in all four categories that have given their work career to this community. Very veteran people. And I do know in your heart of hearts that you do care about those people, and I know that you respect us and you believe that we do a good job. So I guess what I say to you is, when you go to make that vote, realize that. Look at the community surrounding you and realize that they've been there, they've had those discussions, some of them even took the road and ended up coming back to something that wasn't outsourced, that was more in-house. Because the delivery is personal, and those people in this community, my members, my ESP members, when they go into those buildings, they take it personally. All right? It's not just a job to most of us. We spend a good deal of hours of our daily lives in these buildings servicing children in this community and loving every minute of it. Right from bus service to the classroom, to the cleaning of these buildings, to the delivery of service after-school hours, event after event happens in these schools, all our schools. What's going to happen to that if you let this go? So, you know, I just plead with you to please think about those things when you go, you know, the next, whether it be the next meeting or whenever you decide that this vote is going to be. In your discussions, don't just let it be about a bottom line. And I know how difficult the budget is for you to deal with. Believe me. I have to have those talks constantly with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent about a lot of different line items in the budget. But if we do work together somehow, we can make this happen. Outsourcing is not the answer. Thank you.
Sandy, if you'd just, wait just a moment. We had this discussion two years ago. And you asked, and you asked, why then? Okay? And I'll repeat what I said then, that we need to know where we are relative to the rest of the world to do certain jobs, okay? And in fairness to both sides, the employees that we have now and to our taxpayers, as well as consideration for the educational plan that we have, we need to do our job and do what we would call due diligence, to see what the marketplace is, see where we are, and then make a justification whether or not it's not going to be just dollars and cents. It hasn't been. It wasn't when we did the ESP contract two years ago. But I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to have a good idea. This committee needs to have a good idea, a firm idea of what the service is worth in dollars and cents, and then what allowances could we, should we make for all the things that you said. Because I think everyone on this committee has the same feelings of what you said. But we need to do that in order to justify to everyone, the taxpayers, the workers, the students, that we've done our job, okay?
I think I acknowledge that.
So if you can allow us to do that, okay? Get the RFP, get the information, and allow us to make the judgment, then certainly, we will consider everything that you said. We did it the last time, and I think we will still do that. Okay?
Appreciate my position in this, however, as well, please. When you start to speak about going out for RFPs, obviously, I have people that I represent that all of a sudden, all the stress starts to happen, all right? The morale is just incredibly low right now out there for a number of reasons, not just, you know, not just the RFPs, but for another number of reasons, and I will acknowledge that. There's a lot of changes, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that erode that. However, I have to deal with the fact that, once again, they feel like, here we go again. And that's exactly what the comments are out there. Here we go again.
I'm not sure that's going to change, Sandy. The economy being what it is, the plight of the taxpayer who has to pay the bill, it all needs to be considered.
With all due respect, it still leaves my folks feeling like, am I going to have a job? And that's scary, and that's stressful.
It's, I understand.
And, you know, it's like, sort of feeling beat up all the time.
I understand. Believe me, I understand. Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Mrs. Blankenship, for such stirring remarks. And I'll have to agree with you. When people are under stress, they cannot do their job. And it always seems, I've been in this town a long time, Mr. Welch, and was with the school department, it always seems, before I got on the school committee, whenever any time come, this is not a new game. Go back to Bert Hoiberg days. Somebody sitting here, remember? This is not a new game to the members of the committee. It always starts with the lowest paid.
I disagree with that, Mrs. Benson.
And that's your privilege. And I want to finish. That's your privilege. And it always start there, where we can save. We never look clearly into 100 Fairway over there. Everybody, we hire one person, then next thing you know, you got another person helping him, you got another person helping him. And these people, some of them have been on these jobs longer than some of us have been in this town.
Okay, this is public comment. If we could just keep it short. Mr. Mudge?
Mr. Welch, you will not restrain my talking. The people went to the polls to vote for me, just like they did you. And I'm going to speak. Is that clear? I'm not stopping because you say so, but I'm stopping because we haven't answered the question that our attorney said for us to do. There is no need to go out for an RFP. And if the secretary will read my motion over...
There is no motion, Mrs. Benson.
I know that.
Thank you.
The suggestion. And if she will read it back, we can soon bring this to an end. Could you reread what I stated after the attorney stated her?
No, it's been three times. If you want to hear it again, please wait until after the meeting.
You're not a dictator.
Mr. Mudge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Miss Blankenship. First, let me say, I have the highest respect for our working staff, janitorial, led up to the teachers and administrators. You know, we all work, we work hard, and we deserve a good day's pay for a good day's work. But that said, I think there are some things that need to be looked at, like in any organization. We ought to be lean and mean, if you may, and that type of thing.
Excuse me, Mr. Mudge, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mudge has the floor. If you would please, you expect people not to talk when you're talking, please allow the same for the other members of this committee. Please continue, Mr. Mudge.
And that goes for writing notes also.
It is appropriate, in my opinion, to look at, for example, our teaching staffs, any particular function, a janitorial function, buses, or anything else, to ensure that we have the right staffing. You know, not at the state house, you know, if the federal, you know, when it's, we have 10 guys doing a one-man job with the highway department or something like that. We should look at our job and, you know, what our staffing is, and if we, you know, if experts that I think they have, for example, from this high school in the past, came in and said, you know, we should have a certain staffing with certain equipment, obviously, right? And if we have that, you know, that's fine. And that's what we should be doing. But let me let you rest assured, I am not going to support anything that would substitute for an employee, for our employees, on the basis that the new coming or incoming employee would lose their benefits. I have a value. I think that our school committee members, I think our administration, and I think the good help of our town deserve benefits. And if somebody says, well, I can bring somebody else in that doesn't get benefits, ergo, we have a cheaper contract, I'm not supporting that. Okay? So continue to do a good job, and hopefully, you know, we'll get through this thing, and it will be efficient for the town and the community. Thank you.
And thank you. And I guess I want to leave you with the, just reminding you also that the ESP and the school committee and the school department, we've always managed to come out in negotiations, you know, I believe, feeling that both sides came out with something, okay? And the other piece of that is, including my food service folks who, you know, stepped up to the plate. We restructured, the union agreed to that. We downsized, the union agreed to that. There's been many, many changes in my organization at all the different levels over the last, what, five years or so?
Six.
Six years? To, you know, to make sure that we at least showed, you know, that we were trying, you know, to put out, you know, or at least negotiating with faith, let's put it that way. So my hope is that if these talks continue, you know, then it's dealt, we're dealt with in fairness. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to have anything to say on this subject? Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to have anything to say on this subject?
Hi, John Busch Garden, 90th Standel Drive. I have a little bit of peripheral experience with this. I've seen it happen a couple of different times where facilities have decided to outsource, but part of the agreement was that the folks that were on staff were brought on by the company that won the outsourcing bid. So there might be a way to keep as many people happy as possible. Some, I don't know if everybody does it, but just might be worth, when you're talking about the RFP, to see if they can give it to you in a couple of different ways. With their people, keeping the people here, as our folks retire, then they, then they have the right to bring people on, you know, within their company. Because typically, they're expanding their business, so they may not even have the workforce to walk in and to do it seamlessly, and quite frankly, you probably don't want to have that because you might have people that are familiar with how the place operates.
Just, I think that's, that's a given. If we got to that point, I think that would be very necessary, just for our own purposes. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I guess then we can move on. But let's get back to the agenda then. If we can go to the consent, the consent agenda? Oh, we didn't do correspondence yet, I'm sorry. Was it jumped all around? Okay. Is there any correspondence tonight?
I have some. Okay, I'll try to be quick. I received correspondence from Stony Lane saying that Geography B finalists were Justin Moaning or Manning, and from Mr. Skaggs' class, and Mary Beth Clark from Mrs. Johnson's class, who was the runner-up. Also received correspondence from Principal Tom, or Dr. Tom Kenworthy, that the NK Rotary student and teacher were announced. The teacher was Amy Messerlian?
Messerlian.
Messerlian, thank you. And the student was Eliza Drew in 11th grade, so congratulations to them. Also, the, the NK Boys Soccer Team was awarded the sportsmanship for the Rhode Island Scholastic League for Division One teams this fall. I received correspondence from the Wickford PTO, and they were thanking Mr. Buzz and his students for the work on the building sign that is new, that if you go past the Wickford Middle School that is put up. And they were also talking about the, in their newsletter, they talked about the annual turkey trot, which generated $3,700, and congratulations to Mrs. Berg, who was their head teacher turkey, and to Mark Halloran, who was their head student turkey.
And could I just ask you, do, do we know what they were going to use the money for?
Oh, they, yes, they gave the money to the food pantry.
Isn't that, that's a wonderful thing.
Yes.
Yes.
Also, I received correspondence from Erin, or Erin Thomas, that last night at Mount Pleasant, our basketball team played there, and Rob Hazard scored 1,000 points.
That last night?
Yeah.
No, we did score 1,000 last night.
No, no, not one game, but he scored his 1,000th point. You're right, he did not score, we did not win that big. I also received correspondence, I think as we all did, from Mr. Abadizian, to the juniors, junior All-State Mixed Chorus and Band. I'll go through those quickly. The singers were, and I apologize ahead of time for any mispronounced names. For the chorus, the singers were Nina Deepenbach, Kayla Johnson, who was number one, Dana Larkin, Savannah Martin, Megan McGee, Carlos Aldretti, Nathan Evans, Nicholas Hammond, Sam Jenkins, Megan O'Brien, Miranda Johnson, Sarah Cavallieri. And for All-State Treble Chorus, Mercedes Rodriguez, Chelsea Olson, Emily Ogier, so congratulations, Emily Butterball, Kendra Frye, Danielle Guerapi, and Laura Vines. For the All-State Junior Orchestra, we had Megan Bamfield Basin, Mason Dubois Bass, Martha Edwards Viola, I'm sorry, I was giving the, Catherine Levin for Viola, Megan Riley for cello, Catherine Riley, who was the number one violin, Emma Vogel, who was the number one tuba, Sam Jaeger, Hannah Baxter, Olivia Baxter, Lydia Segoris, who was for violin and trombone, Nathan Ackerman, Kate Spitalnick, Mason Hyde, Sarah Pastor. For All-State Symphonic Band, we had Anna Jaeger and Jesse Facy. And for All-State Concert Band, we had Felix Torres, Bethany Lindenblatt, Steeg Lindenblatt, and Benjamin Sawyer.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yes.
You know, it's a tremendous feeling to have such wonderful music program and such wonderfully talented music students here. I had the opportunity to attend both concerts here just prior to Christmas. These, these kids always amaze me how talented they are. One of them, young man, Mr. Kaplan, has been All-State four years in a row on the viola. They're, they're just, the program here is just tremendous, and, you know, it's, it's one of the important aspects that we don't pay maybe enough homage to. We have walls out there covered with plaques about the, the athletic achievements in this, this high school. But when it comes to the arts and the music, they go unheralded a lot, and I just want to say, everyone in this community should be really proud of the music program that we have in this school district.
You're here.
Two other correspondence that I received, and I'll do this quickly, because I know we're out of time. We had our scholastic art competition, and our art and photography winners, the silver key went to drawing to Colin Fagan, the silver key went in drawing to Andrea Materia, and the gold key for painting went to Catherine, Catherine Peralt. In the photography, we had our silver key was, photography was Catherine Peralt, our gold key for photography was Madeline Rizzo, and also, gold key in photography went to Emily Roberts. And the last thing I have is that I received correspondence from the Board of Regents, that they're starting their, their public comment on the proficiency-based graduation requirements for high school. And there are, the two that are closest to us at, well, not really close, but there is one on January 18th, Tuesday, at 5:00 PM, up at the CCRI Flanagan Campus in Lincoln. As I said, that's not really close. But the closer one is then on Wednesday, January 19th, at South Kingston High School, again at 5:00 PM. But if anybody wishes to comment, I'm going to try to make one of those to comment.
Is that on the three, the tiers of diploma?
Yes, that is on the tiers of diploma that they're asking for comments.
Mrs. Avicato?
Yep, just really briefly, we all received many, many letters from students in democracy class, and they were just fabulous.
Great letters.
They, part of their projects for Democracy Fair, which is probably going to be canceled for tomorrow night, because... Oh, it is going to be Monday?
Yes.
Okay, it's been rescheduled to Monday. And the students will...
Kathy, you did say Monday, right?
Monday's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Monday's a holiday.
It's been rescheduled. What, what day was it, Kathy?
I thought it was going to be Thursday.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, we better, that's to be announced later, but maybe we should have that on the website, but...
13.
In any case, the students all wrote to us with different ideas and different projects that they were thinking of putting in place, and they were just some excellent ideas, and the future legislators, obviously, maybe future school committee members, who knows?
Thank you. Mrs. Benson?
I'm sure all of us read the program this morning about the young man that you mentioned about the basketball.
Oh, Rob Hazard.
Yes, and I would like to point out that Rob Hazard has been a student in North Kingstown Schools from kindergarten. And the sports announcer commented about how well-spoken he was, if you heard it, and it was mentioned also the day in the school. And it's nice to see kids that accomplish things like that, and it's critical, as the press is today, to have someone speak about how well-spoken he is. That isn't a tribute to all of our education, and incidentally, Mr. Chair, he's always lived in crossroads.
I'm sure there's some, some point to that, but go ahead. Joe?
I got a magazine from the Rhode Island Blood Center, and I discovered from reading it that our high school won the first place in the previous blood drive they just conducted. And there were two people involved in that. One was Linda Tordowski, I forget who the second one was, if somebody knows, they could say it. But congratulations to them, most of any school in that particular drive.
Thank you, Joe. That being the end of the correspondence. Disclosure of executive session votes?
On January 4th, 2011, motion unanimously passed by all members present to go into executive session. Motion passed to seal the executive session minutes of January 4th, 2011, 4-2 with Kimberly Page and William Mudge voting no. Motion unanimously passed to adjourn executive session and go into open session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is kind of procedural more than anything. I thought about it after that, you know, meeting we had before to vote. I'm saying, we voted to seal minutes, yet we never saw the minutes of the meeting, okay? So, I guess what I'm saying is...
They weren't produced yet.
Huh?
They weren't produced yet, because there was that, was that meeting that we were sitting at?
Yeah, but isn't this on the agenda to vote for tonight? So, so are we going to vote again tonight?
No, no, no. No, this is, this is disclosure of the vote.
Disclosure of the vote to seal the previous minutes.
Of the meeting of the 14th?
Now we're going to read tonight's...
Okay, now, my, I guess my point is, I never saw what the meeting minutes were.
Well, you don't until the following meeting, because the clerk hasn't had a chance to type them yet.
No, she, she did, it was the 14th I'm talking about.
No, we were sitting in the meeting, and you voted no to seal, and they were revealed at tonight's executive session meeting where we approved them.
Okay, so I can get a copy of the minutes of the meeting then? I guess that's all I'm saying.
No, what you can do is you can go to the office and read them in the office as they were sealed.
Oh, I can't get a copy?
That's right.
Who do you remember?
As a school committee member, they're, if they're sealed, they stay in the office, the administration office.
Okay, sure, okay, thank you.
You can go to the office and read them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then tonight's executive session, Linda Avanzado moved Mel Benson second to open the executive session. Kim Page moved Linda Avanzado seconded to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2010. Then Linda Avanzado moved Dick Wells seconded the motion to approve the minutes of November 23rd, 2010. Linda Avanzado moved Kim Page second to close the executive session, and then Linda Avanzado moved and Mel Benson second to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any exceptions to, anyone want to pull out of the consent agenda for discussion?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I have a statement.
Did you get that, Laureen?
Yes.
There was one abstention. Everyone else was in favor?
Oh, five, one abstention. Mr. Much abstained.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business and possible action. School committee budget, I think we've got to wait to, for the superintendent, if somebody wants to discuss something on the school committee budget, which...
I would, Mr. Chair.
Which we don't have as of yet.
We don't have it as yet.
Oh, this is the 211 budget. Item A?
Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, two things.
Yes, sir.
It's two separate questions. It says Funding Formula Update. I assume that they're talking about Funding Formula Update for the 2011 budget?
That's what it says. You're saying no name? I believe that was going to be for the fiscal year 12 budget.
That's correct.
So this has been missed?
So it's, it, it's wrong on the agenda, isn't it? Let me check the agenda, but I believe that's... The agenda says 2010, 2011.
Right. So, we voted on something that wasn't on the agenda?
We didn't vote on anything.
We didn't vote on anything.
Voted on the funding formula?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
The tuition formula for Jamestown is separate, that, that's a different issue.
This is statewide funding formula.
Different item.
Well, that, okay, so this was the statewide funding formula? Okay, so I misunderstood that, I thought we were on funding formula. Mr. Chairman, okay, with respect to the 211 budget, I would like to make a motion, okay, that any monies we collected in 2011, as well as 2010, from Jamestown, for the purpose of, of, of paying off the bond debt, and I believe this year and last year, we can look at the numbers, comes to about $300,000, I am making a motion that we direct the superintendent of schools to forward that money to the town as a, as, to put into the debt service account, as was discussed at the school committee meeting last night, and as articulated by the town manager and the solicitor, who says that that action is required, that the school committee, excuse me, the town manager cannot take those monies, it must be directed from the, from the committee. So I'm making a motion that we pay, we transfer over to the debt service fund any of those monies that we collected for 2010 or 2011. Thank you.
Is there a second on his motion?
I have a second on that one.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Page?
Well, as I understand the purpose of your motion, and while I agree that we need to have some sort of a formalized agreement, I believe last night that the town manager and our attorney addressed that and stated that they didn't need to have the money taken there, that, that how it is set up, where the money is collected, it is put in the town account, the town account then moves it over to us, that everybody in the town council was fine with that, and that there wasn't any discrepancy in how we account it. If we want something more formalized, I would agree to that with the town council after a discussion, but I don't think that tonight that we want to, and I, and I would question whether we could do this under the, the agenda even, so that would be, because I don't, I think we have that, have that spelled out better, and that is not really on the agenda. So, I have that disagreement with the motion, and I think that we could do it in a better way. So that is, would be my other disagreement, if the motion was valid.
Mrs. Avicato?
I would definitely, I would concur with all of those comments. And I had asked a number of different questions in writing to the, and I'm going to forget her title now, Finance Director of the Town, Trish Sunderland, and I sent her several emails, and she did respond. And I asked her to please explain to me the process so that I could understand whether or not we were doing this properly. And she told me in writing that the way it works is Jamestown sends a check to North Kingstown School Department. We do not deposit the check in the school department account. We take the check and walk it over to the town, and it goes into the town's general fund, every penny, and the town council has affirmed this, so did the town manager. Every penny of the money that Jamestown gives us goes into the town coffers. If at that point, it's my contention, and I, and I will hold true to this no matter, regardless of what anyone says, it is the town's decision at that point, if they wish to cut us by the debt service amount from that amount of money, from that particular chunk that came from Jamestown. If they wish to take it out, we absolutely can't stop them, that is their decision. And the way they've done it in the past is, they've just credited that money as a portion of what they're going to fund our budget with. And then we ask for our budget to be funded at a certain level, the town council funds it. It's also, it was also said, and I concur, that it's the town's obligation to pay debt service. It's in their budget for a reason. The town is the only body that's authorized to bond, authorized to borrow money, and authorized to manage the bonds. The school committee has no taxation authority and no authority to control the bonding process, so, you know, the, the buildings are owned by the town, we're using them essentially. We have care, custody, and control of them under 16, too, but they're owned by the town. So therefore, it's proper for them to pay the bond out of their, out of their money, the town's money, as long as the transactions are completely transparent, which I very much concur with Mr. Much, that they need to be transparent, so that we can see the money and the flow of the money. I think it's done appropriately that way, so I would agree with Mrs. Page's comments.
Ms. Benson?
I agree in part with Mrs. Page's comments, and I was at the meeting last night, and each one of us is going to give our interpretation as to what the town manager said. I have spoken numerous of times stating that the school committee has no taxing authority. So I would ask that, that we would, it's nothing we can do about the state formula, and I think that's what we were talking about. So I suggest that this is a moot subject until we can have a longer meeting and understanding, because each one of us and... because each one of us, and who was it? I think it was one of the Supreme Court justices said, you probably know Mrs. Avanzado, that you get six lawyers in a room and none of them agree on anything. So, this will have to be for discussion at another time. And so, let's carry it on, that this is just a moot.
Mr. Welch, I, I have to concur with Mrs. Page. This hasn't been advertised. This is too big an item to put under a 2010 school budget. It is out of order. It's not advertised and it shouldn't be discussed tonight without a line item specific to that.
No, no, come on now.
You in North Kingstown, Mr. Mudge, may I finish, please?
Eleven budget.
Finish, Mr. Mudge, now let her finish.
And I, I kind of object to the broadness of these things.
Okay, that's fine, you object. We, we have opinion from council and, and I concur. Mr. Thompson, you had a question?
I have been listening to Bill's problems with the Jamestown and I've kind of broken them into three problem areas. The tuition rate, which we handled tonight, the terms of the contract language, which I have been told we're going to have a subcommittee that's, that's going to start meeting on that, and I wish to be on that committee. And then there's something about the flow chart that is, he, I think, well, he's gotten me thinking about it anyway, is to whether that money comes over and eventually goes into an account that reduces the bond service. Because if it doesn't, then perhaps our taxpayers are paying more money than they should on that bond service. What I'm asking is, get the town lawyer and the school committee lawyer to give us a written document...
I have that already, Mr. Thompson.
Showing the flow chart that the money takes in coming from Jamestown, finally into the account that pays down the school bond. Let them certify that this is the legal and proper schematic and have them automatically include that specific fund in the annual audit so the auditors can state in writing that the right amount did go where it was supposed to. I would be very pleased if I could kind of put that issue to bed. I, I don't know whether it's going into the right place or not, but I think if I got a letter from both the town and the school committee and there was a flow chart and we were to add that to the audit so that the auditor would come in every single year and say, yes, it did go into that, that'd satisfy me. I don't, I can't speak for Bill.
Well, that's the proper accounting, yes.
Mr. Thompson, for your information, this has, legal opinion has been, been given by both the, the town's solicitor and our attorney. It has gone before the town's audit committee.
And the auditors looked at it too.
The town's auditors have been made aware of it, the outside auditors. And everyone except Mr. Mudge appears to be satisfied that what is being done meets all of the criteria and that the town is getting the money. The one thing I think that, that needs to be expressed is that the town council has one jurisdiction over the school committee when it comes to budget, and that's the bottom line. And what they're agreeing to, okay, is funding our budget, okay? The expenses of the educational system here in North Kingstown. They're not agreeing to any revenue of any kind. They're agreeing to pay the expenses of the education process here in North Kingstown. All of the revenues except for federal grants, okay, go directly, if not to the town, through the school department, to the town. We don't, we don't collect money, okay? The grant process is specific in nature in that it funds certain programs, like the Race to the Top. That can't go to the town. That has to go to the school department to pay for certain programs. So, if the town is getting the money, what they do with it in the general fund, whether they're paying policemen, firemen, teachers, janitors, that's up to the town because they're agreeing to fund the bottom line on our budget.
Mr. Chairman, could you help me?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
What did, what was said at the town council meeting last night then? What was the conclusion? Because I take away, I took away again from that, that both the town solicitor said that he and the school committee chair agreed that it's a ministerial action in terms of moving money that was appropriated in the school budget, which included 22 or 23, 2.1 or 2.3 million dollars from Jamestown. The town cannot touch that appropriated money. That money would go for a bill, that whatever bill it is, whether it's heat or electricity, whatever the funding is, only the town, okay, excuse me, only the school committee can direct the bill to be paid. And we had an obligation, a moral obligation also, to put money into the debt service account from Jamestown. We haven't done that. 1.6 million dollars we didn't do.
Okay.
And that was the extra money that the taxpayers had to pay and the school committee spent since 2002.
Bill, no matter how many people in this, in this town, try to explain to you the situation, you're not willing to accept it.
That's right.
So, the, the only thing I can say to you, Bill, is you need to find somebody of substance like the Attorney General, like the Commissioner of Education, like the Auditor General for the state of Rhode Island to agree with you. Because we can't keep on talking about this forever, Bill.
What did the solicitor say last night? Would you help me?
In essence, what he said was, there isn't a problem, Bill.
He did say it wasn't a problem.
He said it wasn't a problem?
That's right.
That's what he said.
All right. So, we, so we walk away from the meeting and I'll go back to the town council and I'll say, gee, could somebody tell me what the process is again because you got it wrong?
Okay, all right. Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I did, I, I asked for a specific flow chart and I said, maybe this will help us put this thing to bed. Your answer to me was, oh, well, we were there last night and we had the one lawyer said it and the other lawyer and they agreed with it. If we got a written flow chart from two lawyers in this town telling us that it's going into that account that pays off the debt service, that, I would like that and it might help put this thing to bed.
I would be happy if that was the end of it. I'm not so sure that we can accomplish that, Mr. Bill. Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Carroll?
We will, I try.
Could, could you ask for that?
Mr. Maroney, I spoke to Mr. Maroney at length today. Yes, I, I can ask, we can take care of that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Thompson?
That would be very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Benson?
I just wanted to say to the new members of the school committee, we have gone through some of this that you said and that Bill said and the others on the committee. And I remember asking Mr. Draper specifically if the money for Jamestown was a pass-through. And instead of going back, we didn't get an answer then. We didn't get an answer then. And we don't need an answer now because it was made very clearly unless we specify where the money goes, it goes into the school's account. Am I correct, attorney? Unless we specify?
Yes, you are correct.
And this is what they're asking and this is what they want on a flow chart. And that's what the citizens want to know because we have sent the money without any direction for the bond. And I, I'm a little bit disgusted at the way you used to be on those things about the school bond, that you couldn't give us a little bit more guidance concerning that. Because that was one of your things for years about paying the school bond. And I'm a little bit disgusted, but that's the way it is. So, we're gonna get a flow chart and that will put this to rest.
Mrs. Avanzado?
I'm a little bit disgusted also.
If it shows the money ending up in the bond account, paying the bond account, if it goes somewhere else for a general fund unspecified, then I think we got a problem.
I think it's already been made, it's been made very clear. The money does not go into the bond. The money goes into the town's general coffers. The treasurer told me that in writing.
Because you do not specify where it's going.
Money goes in the, excuse me, I'm speaking.
No.
The money goes to the town. They then deposit it, wherever they deposit, it's their decision. If they just, if they decide to take the bond money out of that money, great. If they decide to take it out of other money, great. Either way, it doesn't matter what they take it out of, it's all the same pot.
And it goes into the school fund. It doesn't go into the general fund. It goes into the school fund.
We're gonna get this answered in writing, right?
Yep.
Okay. Let's, let's...
I'll follow you the email that the treasurer sent to me, just so you can see it.
I've had it.
One at a time, please.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Can we please move on? Okay. Appointment to the budget subcommittee.
Volunteers.
I need volunteers to be on the budget subcommittee. It can only be three.
I would think we'd have a easy scoring. I'm gonna suggest Mr. Mudge and I see Mr. Thompson volunteer.
I'm gonna decline.
Mr. Mudge declines being on the budget subcommittee.
Well, we don't want to hear your mouth about the budget.
Well, I did my homework.
You cannot hop on this train when the courtiers get together.
Well, Ms. Benson, tonight I tried to give you all the information on Jamestown.
Wrong time, wrong station.
You know, it was, we appreciate it, so why go through the effort? Okay? I'll do my own thing.
You're going through the effort non-legally.
No.
You're going through the effort non-legally.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you wanted to be on the budget subcommittee?
Am I it? I will volunteer for it. Can't even keep my checkbook straight, but I know reason in how to spend taxpayers' money.
One more, please.
What about Larry? Would he be interested, do we think?
I can't speak, I can't speak for Larry and we gotta get this done.
We have to get this done by state law. Mr. Mudge, I'm not gonna beg you, but you are acting just like a spoiled child. We sit here and listen at you. You can't get on the train after it's been gone. That is just pure devement.
Listen, I, I decline to be on the budget committee.
Keep your mouth shut.
Okay? Mrs. Benson?
You don't have to have three. I mean, you can have...
I was gonna say, I can be on it, but I would, I would be willing that if somebody else wanted to attend a certain meeting, that I would step down because I am also on the policy and the wellness committee, so I, I do kind of feel like I have a full plate.
This is my first time on the budget committee and I'm gonna give you full force.
The only, the only thing I could say, Kim, is it's, it's only from now until the end of February, you know, so it is a short term.
That is a permanent committee according to state rules. Look it up tomorrow if I ever get to state house.
Yes, Joe.
I know last year we provided three budgets. There was a high, medium, and low.
That's what, that's what the town council asked for.
Are we gonna do the same this year?
They have not asked for anything.
Are we gonna get one or are we gonna get three?
I think that we'll have that discussion. I can't, I can't answer you right now without the superintendent being here. But the discussion last year was, they asked us at the joint meeting for that.
Right.
Okay? They did not ask us for that.
Mr. President, would you, when you have your discussions with the superintendent, would you suggest that we do not make three, but we do have a Plan A and a Plan B? And we will work to keep all of them within the cap because we have to work with the state cap. But we'll have two alternatives.
Okay.
Could you convey that to him and let me know?
I will have the clerk probably let you know. She should be the first one to talk to him. Okay?
Okay, you're not gonna be talking with him?
I won't, probably won't talk to him until Friday.
Okay, well, you convey that to him when you have your meeting.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Next thing is, we already voted on the Jamestown. Is the CIP existing bond, future bond?
Anything on that? I don't think there's anything.
There's nothing on that?
Nope.
Okay. The next thing is the policy, IJNDB point two, internet and computer usage policy. Second read.
Yes, this is our second read for this policy. This is basically a child internet protection policy, also called a SIPA. We are required by federal law to have this because of the, the usage of, that we allow our students who are under 16 and also between 16, 18, and over to use the internet and to have a policy stating what we allow them to do and what we don't allow them to do. This policy is written basically from the federal guidelines and it was the sort of thing of, we did more of a cut and paste and put in North Kingstown versus where they had. So, it's not something that we just drew up out of our heads and was basically following federal guidelines. We've had a first read and we didn't on December 14th, 2010. So, tonight's for a second read. And if there aren't any comments, then I would ask that we also have an adoption of the policy. So, I'll make the motion that we approve the policy and then we can discuss it from there. So, I would make the motion that we approve IJNDB point two.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Richard Booth for his assistance. He came into the meetings a couple of times and assisted Mrs. Page with that and the rest of the policy subcommittee, so I wanted to thank him for his help with that.
Isn't that part of the job?
Yes.
Okay. These accolades for doing the job.
We can still thank him.
We can thank people for doing a good job. Okay.
We don't know what the job...
So, can we have a vote on the motion? Yep, you have a second.
A second?
We have, we have the second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimous. Now, we're down to new business discussion only and, you know, the majority of this, of that information in that category is, really needs to come from the superintendent. So, I would ask if you don't mind that we push this off.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I just make a couple of comments on the 12 budget?
Yes.
As a, an expectation, what, what I would like to see in the presentation from the school, the administration is, it's akin to, I think, zero-based budget, if you may. What I would like to see is a budget, this year's budget, assuming that nothing changes in terms of, you know, students and people and so forth and so on, I would like to see this year's budget on all the different programs and running everything else, cost it out in terms of if we emulated everything, including population, what would the, you know, increases in teachers' rate and inflation and things like that, what would it cost to run this program next year without any changes? And that, I think, would give us a good baseline to say, okay, you know, we know where we can fall within, you know, this range or another range and it gives us a baseline.
Yes, Mrs. Benson?
The point of order is, Mr. Mudge, you were put on the committee.
Excuse me.
We haven't had time to organize. And you've given us all of these things. That's why we wanted you on the committee to give your expectation.
You know, I, I'm just suggesting that as a start, I mean, I guess members can make comments that aren't on the budget committee, okay, to the committee.
Yes, please, please do.
Okay? And again, all, all I'm saying is to give us a clear understanding of where we are today, if we were to emulate everything today, like I buy a new car Ford today and I buy one next year, I know what it's gonna cost. I think that'll give us a tremendous, you know, opportunity to look at the deltas and so forth and so on.
I, I, I think, and...
You have a good idea.
I think we agree with you, Bill. I think that without you being involved in it, it, it probably won't get done the way you want it.
No, that's all right. I'll, I'll still go to work. You know, I can get this done, you know, I, I...
Bad boy, bad boy.
And I, I think it's a good start and I'll, I'll certainly, you know, pitch in and do my thing.
My suggestion is that you participate in the, the budget subcommittee.
Could I make another comment, Mr.?
I guess, sure.
You know, what I think, what should a budget subcommittee do? And I was thinking about that the other day. Certainly, a budget subcommittee doesn't make decisions for anybody.
No, not at all.
Hey, it doesn't make decisions for anyone. But I think the budget subcommittee job is, and hopefully it can be easy, is it really takes all the data and it does an analysis and can be used and the committee can use this data to answer questions for other members, you know, about X, Y, Z, Q. And it, it tries to make sure the presentation is done in any type of format that you may want so you can get quick or good information and make good business decisions. You know, and I think, you know, most people can do that. But again, it is a tool to be used by the committee to make decisions so we have good, by the committee to make decisions so we have good, sound information and we base our decisions on good, you know, practical and sound information, and sound data. So, you know, I think you can do that and I'll, you know, look forward to, you know, what the, you know, the budget's yield and so forth and so on. So, again, I don't look at it as a decision-making committee, but a support committee to the school committee.
Okay. Mrs. Benson?
I just want to say that I did volunteer for the meeting for it to be looked at as a decision-maker or anything. My thoughts about a Budget Committee is, you iron out the different things, get different people's idea, so when we come to the public, we can show that we all agree and eliminate some of that talking. And I'm gonna say it one more time, your information is valuable. I'm sorry that you, the little boy, took your ball and went home.
You still have my information. And by the way, Mrs. Benson, you misunderstood what I just said because it isn't that everyone, it isn't that everyone will agree.
All right.
That everyone will have the right information and the same information.
Okay.
Point of order, let's not have these sidebars between members at the table. Let's do everything for the chairman, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Avicano.
Order, see.
Uh, Mr. Page?
Well, I just had a question as to three of the things that are on the agenda so that I would know since, I don't know if there'll be discussion next time, but I wanted to know if the website update, if that was going to be telling us more about what has been done on the website or if that was going to be more of a question period.
It was, it was designed to tell you more about what's been happening lately on the website and to answer any questions people may have.
Okay. My other question was the employee suggestion email. I don't understand what we were gonna be, I know this for discussion only, I guess I was, is this to say, should we have employee suggestion email or, I'm not really sure what the topic was?
It's in lieu of a suggestion box for the employees to put in information to come directly to the school committee for review and consideration. And it can be from anything, from something that might be an efficiency so that we would save operational money, to things that are scheduling, it could be anything that would help the school system. All too often, this was a suggestion that I made to the superintendent, wanting to get the employees' input directly to the school committee, all too often, the people who push the broom, so to speak, get, get lost in the shuffle. They have good ideas, but an immediate supervisor, for one reason or another, doesn't think much of it or much of the employee. The suggestion goes no place. The employee decides, why bother? Nobody listens to me. So, if, if we can get all of the employees to really understand that this school committee really wants to listen to them, wants to understand what their suggestion is about and work with them, make sure that everybody understands that everybody has worth and importance, their ideas should be looked at and listened to and given some value judgment by this committee. And then let us go forward and say to the administration, we believe this has merit. We would like to have the administration do it.
Would they be signing the emails going? I think this is a good idea, but I just want to make sure that we would have a means of being able to get back to people if we had more questions.
Because they would come by email, we would, it would be date stamped and we would know who sent it. And that would also help to discourage felonious and negative, vulgar emails, okay? Trying to get good value information in and then say to the employee that has, has taken the initiative to go forward and give this, tell them that we appreciate their input, et cetera. Yes, Mrs. Avicano?
Is your idea to put this, like, on the website and have a place where they can?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. You looking for a motion?
No, no, it's only for discussion only. Mr. Thompson?
In your, in your discussion of this, it reminds me of the hotline over in Newport and it was a phone with a message which was listened to and the rule was if they wanted, if they left their name, we would get back to them with our findings. If they wanted to be anonymous, that was fine, but we wouldn't be able to get back to them. So, you might want to put something similar to that in there.
Let's, let's first see how it's, my suggestion would be to see how it works this way because hopefully people, if they feel as though they're going to be recognized for putting in the extra effort, which is really what I hope comes out of it, okay? And that we learn things that maybe we wouldn't otherwise know and even the administration wouldn't otherwise know because, you know, not everything comes uphill. It has a way of stopping someplace along the line.
Never have run uphill.
And if the only people who have good ideas are the people at the top, the people at the bottom say, you know, my opinion isn't worth anything? And I, I'd like to, if possible, make sure that the people that work for us don't have that opinion. I'm not saying they do, I'm hoping that they don't. Yes, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think Joe's familiar with this. You know, it would almost be nice to have a program where we could award, you know, people, you know, certain financial, you know, contributions in terms of if they put a suggestion in that we can document saves a $10,000 for the first year, give them 10%, give them $1,000. That would encourage that.
I would encourage, I would encourage the Budget Subcommittee to talk about that.
And, and just as they did it at, at, in the Navy, not that it's right, is that you wouldn't get credit if there was your supervisory responsibility, but if it's not, you know, supervisor's responsibility and he, even the supervisor could, could participate in a, in a benefit if he found something in another, you know, organization, if you may, a group.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Bill. I think if the Budget Subcommittee came up with guidelines and
Budget Subcommittee?
The Budget Subcommittee, because if you, if you were going, if you're gonna be giving
It's gonna be given the financial insanity.
What are you calling this thing?
It has to be in the budget.
What are you calling this? So I can just know what I'm talking about.
Employee suggestion email.
Employee suggestion email? Thank you.
It used to be called, maybe, Beneficial
I would hope that we would
Benny Sugg.
Benny Sugg, which is Beneficial Suggestion Program.
I would hope that we would look at it as, and I don't know about the monetary and I shouldn't be saying it here, I should save it for the Budget Subcommittee. Can, before we, I make a motion to dismiss, since we have the Budget Subcommittee upon
Obviously, a T G, we're gonna, you're gonna dismiss us tonight rather than adjourn.
Yes, because you need to leave some of it here. You are the chair. When do you suggest that the Budget Subcommittee
ASAP.
Do we have, now I want to know the ground rules. Do we have to?
Not tomorrow, Bill.
No, I'm not coming out tomorrow. Do I have to contact you? I want to follow the
No, you work with the administration, Ned and the superintendent
Thank you.
To go over the budget.
I know what the work is, but when do we know? You said I'd have to get with Mr. Draper, I have the superintendent to call the first meeting. I don't want to be on the committee name. We are gonna meet.
Then we have to advertise with the Secretary of State's website, so we have to have at least three days.
The Subcommittee only has to be on the secretary
Forty-eight hours, right?
Forty-eight hours, right.
Yes, forty-eight hours.
So, it'll, just once we talk to the administration about what date is available for them and us, then we'll just need to make sure we have 48 hours to advertise.
And I would hope that the chair would make it
Okay, so we're, okay, so
I would hope that the chair would, in his weekly meeting with the chair and the vice chair with the superintendent and whoever they meet with, would stress the importance of it because no use in the Budget Subcommittee if we don't meet and get things back because the budget has a very short time period. So, would you convey that? And Mr. Draper, you're here, could you get that?
Okay.
Very short time.
Okay, just want to, so the items that we didn't cover tonight will be on the agenda of the next meeting, okay?
And how many days do we, Mrs. Page, have to suggest items for the agenda?
For the Budget Subcommittee?
No, no, for the agenda in general.
Oh, 14 days ahead of time.
I would suggest that I'll get on the, the School Committee Secretaries that we revisit the policy 14 days to get an item on the agenda.
You can't.
What, the issue about having it any less?
I didn't mean for discussion. Let's get it on the agenda and then we'll save it for that.
Okay, I'll be more than happy to tell you, talk to you about that. There's some problems with advertising in the newspaper and that's why we've had the 14 days.
They don't take advertisement once a week?
They do, but in order to, we have to have it in Monday for Thursday and so it's, then you're usually making it up on Friday, so it's just a matter of, you know, it's backtracking.
Okay, this isn't on the agenda. We need to move forward and adjourn. I just want to remind you that the items that were not covered tonight will be on the next agenda. Make motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash. Wherever you